Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I call the informational meeting on January 5, 2020, to order. Happy New Year. Welcome to those here watching online or on television. For the record, let's find out who we have on the phones. Counselor Jensen, are you on the phone?
Here.
Counselor Kylie? Or Counselor Starr? Okay, so we have Counselor Jensen on the phone at this point. First, we're going to start with committee and commission reports. The first is Metro Management Council. I didn't hear Counselor Kylie on the phone. Counselor Erickson, could you cover that?
Yeah, do you want to go to the next one, and then we'll see if Kylie's back on?
Sure.
I know he's usually the one prepared for it.
Absolutely. Next up is the Municipal Band Task Force. Counselor Jensen, could you make that report?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Municipal Band Task Force met December 17, 2020, and we had a great meeting. All members were present, and we kind of got some of our next steps through one of our committee members. Alex Holbeck had reached out to the Washington Pavilion and talked with them about how we could collaborate with them to help Director Hill and the municipal band, you know, survive in the long term as well as the near term. And I think Director Hill was extremely excited to hear that idea, and we created a little working group of Liz Gullickson, Alex Holbeck, and Director Chris Hill to go and meet with the Pavilion to see what options we had in moving forward together. So at our next Municipal Band Task Force meeting, we'll hear from the Pavilion and work through that. And if Councilor Erickson would like to add anything to that, I think that's basically the highlight of it, and that's the way Director Hill, Alex Holbeck, Liz Gullickson, and our task force wanted to move. So, great results. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jensen. Counselor Erickson, anything to add?
We'll have another meeting here coming up in the future to discuss that further after they have their meeting. And so it was a great meeting. We had a presentation by our budget analyst to talk about what other cities do and fund for the municipal bands, and so just a comparison all around the way and just talking about some of the in-kind expenses as well. And, you know, we've really just taken a high approach to find out what other places do and what we can do to make this process better by still honoring the integrity of having a municipal band here in Sioux Falls. And so it's been great things. All the task members have been offering a lot and excited for potential change.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Chair?
Yes, Counselor Becky.
I don't have it on the agenda, but I do have a brief report I'd like to give on the Tuthill House Committee, and I think this might be the appropriate place to do it, or should I just do it under council remarks? Whatever is your preference.
I think you could make the report now. I don't think it matters.
Okay, thank you.
Why don't you go ahead and do that?
And again, I will notify Tom in the future. I'll try to just put those committee reports and keep that ongoing, just like what's going on with the municipal band. I've been working with an ad hoc committee that's been formed to work on the Tuthill House, and, you know, there's been two, you know, lengthy meetings, very positive meetings. And basically, what was done at the first meeting was, after a lengthy discussion, we decided to break the committee into three subcommittees, and the three subcommittees include a design committee, a fundraising committee, and what I call a resource committee, or one that's kind of trying to deal with legal requirements, like how to set up an entity that can accept fundraising, how can we do it in such a way that it's done as a gift and then turned over to the city, so that subcommittee's working on that. I'm trying to make myself available to all those committees, but I'm going to the group meetings so that I can hear the reports from all them. I'm actually on the design committee, and that has had one meeting, and then we're prepared to, you know, offer a report to the full committee. We'll be meeting again on January 7. I will say that the design committee meeting, basically, what's coming from a questionnaire, they sent out a questionnaire to allow people to give their input as to what, you know, what direction we should be going with this. And generally speaking, I would say there's a consensus that we're trying to find that blend of historic preservation and accelerating the commercial use that already exists out there, and trying to do it in a historical setting that also takes advantage of the historical nature of the building and perhaps, you know, a process along the way, including picture boards and signage within and without the building to actually enhance that historical experience, but at the same time, not making it so historically perfect that it isn't functional for the use that it's been using, and we want to do things actually on the inside that enhance that use as well. And that's at its earliest stages, but that's kind of a center point for where it's going at this point.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for bringing that report. Let's definitely make sure we have that regularly on the agenda because it's of keen interest to the council. Next, let's see, I think I heard Counselor Kylie come on. Counselor Kylie, are you there?
I am here.
Would you be prepared to make the Metro Management Council report?
Well, I thought I was, but I think I deleted my link to the meeting, so if you can give me time, I will find that and present at a different time unless Counselor Erickson is prepared to do so.
Well, we could circle back later in this meeting or at the next meeting, so.
Possibly at the end if you want. I'm trying to pull up my thing, and it's just circling, so I don't know what the deal is with my download, so just trying to pull up the notes. I apologize. I should have had it pulled up earlier.
We'll see if we have time at the end.
Thank you.
It's not my intention to put Counselor Erickson on the spot. We both attended remotely, so we didn't have paper copies of the notes and minutes, so, yeah, hopefully we can locate that shortly for you. So we can give a complete update. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to council remarks. Any council remarks today on the phones? If not, we're going to move on to presentations. Our first item is Item A, COVID-19 Update, presented by Director Jill Franken. Welcome.
Hello, everybody. It's good to be here today. It's been about a month. I think it was December 8 when we last provided an update to all of you, and there has certainly been a lot happening since that time. So we're going to expand this update just a little bit. I'm going to talk briefly about the status of COVID in our community. And then Sandy France, Public Health Manager, who's really been overseeing much of the work we are participating in and in collaboration with the health systems around vaccine progress and distribution. And then Brianne from the mayor's staff will be talking about our community education and awareness campaign that I know is of interest to the council, given the item on the agenda tonight, for appropriating some dollars in that direction. So I will go ahead and get us started, and, you know, I always use what I probably look at regularly, I'm guessing, on our dashboard on the city's website. This is a two-week snapshot of where we're at with COVID cases. You can see the upper left is our active cases. To the right is our daily, new daily cases. Three-day average of new cases is in the lower right, or lower left, and then lower right is hospitalizations. I guess the best way I can describe kind of where we're at in the last two weeks is, you know, and I've used this term before, when I've come before the council, like over the summer, and that is really that we're kind of in a holding pattern, a steady pattern right now. You know, you can see our new daily cases are really very, very flat when you look at where we're trending. You can see our hospitalizations are taking what are a little bit of a decreasing turn, which is really good, but certainly it would be nice to see us continue to move downward in that direction with hospitalizations. But, you know, we've reached about 100,000 total cases in the state to date, and then about 25,000 in Minnehaha County and 7,000 in Lincoln County. So, you know, I think it's important for us to really take a look at where we've come with COVID in our community and remind ourselves of the importance of really continuing with the mitigation efforts that are in the resolution that you all approved about a month and a half or so ago. You can see how we've, if you look at, like, basically the beginning of when we started seeing cases or very late in March, early April, when we started really seeing that start to tick up was right after the 1st of April. And that first surge really took us through till it started waning, you know, around the end of June and into July. Then we saw that lull period for quite some time. It certainly was still plenty of activity going on in our community, but we were seeing the benefit of summer, people being able to be outdoors more, less congregating indoors and things of that nature. And so, you know, that's just the trend that we were seeing with our active cases, and then you can see it really followed along with the remaining four data points as well. They've been very similar. So then, if I just orient you to when we started really becoming concerned, it was about mid-October that the Mask Up Sioux Falls Campaign was launched. That's when we really started seeing that surging up of active cases, new cases, hospitalizations. And then it was really in those first few weeks of November that you all were spending a lot of time regarding various policy in this space, as well as a resolution that was ultimately passed on around 11/17. That's when you can see, if you look at this, and I know these are small graphs, but we were pretty much getting close to the height of our new daily cases, and we were really reaching around that time the peak of our surge. And so I really credit your leadership and the work of the city council. I think even the debate you were having in the weeks prior to passing that ordinance, I think really resonated with this community. I think it spoke volumes to this community as to the need for us to be mitigating the spread of COVID in our community and everyone doing their part. So when that was ultimately passed, I think that all those discussions really kick-started the awareness for our community and what we need to do. So I congratulate you for that, and I really thank you also for extending that further into this late winter and early spring. I think that's going to be incredibly important as we continue all the mitigation efforts. You know, we've said all along, masks are just part of the solution. We also need to be following the other items and the other mitigation efforts that can help us reduce transmission so we get enough, you know, runway to be able to make sure we can get our vaccinations well distributed in our community. So there's a lot of work yet on that and on the vaccine front. I will turn it over to Sandy. She's got a number of updates for you in that area, so I'll have Sandy come up next. Thanks.
Sandy, nice to have you here again.
Thank you. Okay, Council, good afternoon. So the map that you have before you is from the Bloomberg Vaccination COVID Tracker site. So this is one of two sites that I kind of keep an eye on on a regular basis. Both it and the CDC have COVID vaccine tracker sites. The Bloomberg site uses data collected from government sources, so state departments of health as well as the CDC to provide information on where we as states are with regards to distribution of vaccine. So the goal on this map is to be the deeper, darker shades of green. So as you can see by looking at this map, both South Dakota, North Dakota, Minnesota, Maine, some of our darker green states are the states that are actually having higher percentage populations vaccinated with their initial dose of COVID vaccine. So as of their update yesterday afternoon, the state of South Dakota has vaccinated 3.05% of our total population. If you look at the city's dashboard, COVID dashboard, our GIS department is also breaking that information down to Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties for review, and as of today's numbers, Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties have provided vaccinations to 4.62% of our population. Now, this information is purely based on population base and percentage. If you look at the CDC's COVID tracker, their site is put on per capita basis. It gives you a little bit better ability to compare apples to apples between states. And as we've monitored that state since the beginning of the vaccination efforts, South Dakota has rated consistently within the top 10 states with regards to vaccine distribution. Our healthcare systems, in coordination with our state health department and in partnership with their agencies, have really had a heavy lift and done quite an amazing job at making sure that as vaccine comes into the state that we are actually getting it distributed and put into arms. Both this Bloomberg site as well as the CDC's site have a second site that you can flip to so that you can see where we are with percentage of vaccine distributed. So if you looked at this site this morning, it would tell you that just over 62% of the vaccine that's come to the state has been distributed, and I just kind of want to caution you as you look at that site, both this one's and the CDC's site, we were a little over 70% over the weekend. Came down because the state received an allocation of vaccine, which we are now in the process of dispensing. And then the other thing is that our federal pharmacy partnerships, the group that's going into our long-term cares and vaccinating that group, which is Group B, has not been able to get all of their doses that they've administered uploaded into the state's database system, which feeds then into these systems. So, you know, if it says we only have vaccinated, or we only have dispensed 65% of the vaccine that we've received in the state, you have to look at that very cautiously because, again, between the state and the commitments with their healthcare systems, as vaccine comes in, vaccine is going back out. There's every effort to keep it into people and off the freezer shelves. So as we look a little bit more to what's happening within South Dakota, we are just right at three weeks post our first vaccinations in the state. So we are just in the efforts now of providing that second dose of Pfizer vaccine to the frontline healthcare workers, that Group A that received their first doses three weeks ago. Today was the beginning of the efforts. According to the State Department of Health's website, 27,260 doses of vaccine have been provided to South Dakotans in the last three weeks. So just again, a reminder that the State Department of Health has partnered with our large healthcare systems, so Avera, Sanford, and Monument, to take the lead on vaccinations of people that are in Phase 1 of the state's phased vaccination plan. So we are currently in Phase 1, Group C. Some effort is still being done in Group B, and then just a quick reminder, so Phase 1, Group A, is those frontline healthcare workers and staff at long-term care, the initial people that receive vaccine. Group B is residents of long-term care facilities. That process is being done right now, as well as Group C, which began last week. Group C are other healthcare workers, public health workers, emergency medical services providers, law enforcement, and correctional officers. When we're done with Group C, we will progress to Group D. That is a very, very, very large group of people. It includes persons with two or more health conditions, teachers and other school staff, persons over the age of 65, residents of congregate living center, and funeral service workers. When that group is completed, then we'll move to the last group in Phase 1, which is Group E. That's another fairly significant group. It includes fire service personnel that are not EMS, and then other critical infrastructure. Once we progress through those phases, those five groups within Phase 1, then we'll progress to Phase 2, which means we should have vaccine available to the general community that does not fit within one of these other groups. So leadership from our healthcare systems meets with the State Department of Health twice a week on Tuesdays and Fridays, and that's when the decision gets made really around the what group are we in, which is based on where we are in dispensing our vaccine and providing coverage to each of the groups, and when can we move to the next group. So really, direction on the groups that we are in comes from the State Department of Health. So I think that as we talk about that, then it would, it just naturally reflects the fact that the questions we're receiving the most, whether we're talking to our healthcare systems or within our agencies, are what group am I in? When can I get my vaccine? And where do I go to get it? And because those pieces are so key to the information campaign and education campaign that we would like to bring forward to you, I'm going to go ahead and turn that over to Brianne to address.
Great. Welcome, Brianne.
Hello. Hi, I'm Brianne Becker-Konek from the mayor's office. Thanks for having me today to share a few updates on our marketing efforts. I wanted to start out with just as a brief update on the messaging we've been sharing, so continuing to beat the drum of the importance of mitigation efforts like Director Franken shared. So this is a digital billboard that is being displayed across the community right now. So as part of that $20,000 that was allocated to us to spend on COVID mitigation marketing, we had three months of digital billboards that were part of that, along with a PSA from the mayor, so that was included as part of that. Also wanted to share with you some social media posts that are going out on the city's webpage, again, sharing the importance of the COVID action plan, encouraging community members to do their part. So these are messages we're sharing now. We've also been preparing for vaccine education messaging, so I wanted to share some outline of a plan that we've been working on as you consider the $100,000 appropriation this evening. So really, Sandy spoke to the why and the importance of educating the community. So this is really going to be quite a heavy lift, and we anticipate needing a full $100,000 to really reach a broad spectrum of the community. If you think about needing to really educate everyone from someone in their 20s to their 50s about vaccine, the importance of the vaccine, safety, the education around that, and really directing them to where to go for the vaccine as well. And we'll be looking for additional funding resources beyond that amount to really augment the campaign. Just as a broad overview of the campaign, this would be a six-month marketing campaign to really coincide with what we anticipate taking six months to really roll out the vaccine to the community. We've partnered with a local ad agency, Fresh Produce, that is, that we plan to help develop campaign messaging and strategy for this. So the bulk of the campaign would really be on media buys, so things like radio, TV ads, et cetera, that would drive residents to a landing page. So this landing page would be the vaccine hub that would have these vaccine resources, so everything from educational materials, links to the Department of Health website, opportunities to schedule vaccination, along with resources in general about the vaccine. It would be a multilingual campaign, realizing, like I spoke to earlier, the importance of reaching across the community with this type of messaging. We would target adults 21 and over, skewing female, knowing that females typically tend to make more of the healthcare decisions in the household, so that would be a component of that. As a general outline of the campaign, we would target our messaging based on the availability of the vaccine. So Sandy mapped out broadly where we're at with the vaccine availability. So we would start late January and really highlight confidence building in the vaccine, so educating the public so they're prepared to get the vaccine even if it's not their turn yet, so really building up confidence in the safety and efficacy of the vaccine. And then the next phase would be continue building confidence. At that portion of the campaign, we would also have videos to really highlight members of the community, business leaders, nonprofit leaders, et cetera, who have already gotten the vaccine to really showcase those voices. And then widespread availability at that point, it would be more around the logistics, but obviously we'd be conveying that throughout in terms of where to get the vaccine. These would be engaging, actionable messaging. The media placement would be a broad spectrum of media buys, so everything from radio to direct mail, social media, digital billboards, to really address a broad spectrum of the community. If you think about people get their news and information from a variety of outlets, and if we're trying to reach across the community, that's really important that we use all of those resources. I mentioned partnering with advocates in the community and business leaders, so this is one part of the campaign I'm particularly excited about. So you may have heard the phrase influencers, so identifying some, you know, some of those influencers in the community who we can ask to share videos and really help educate the community about the vaccine, but also share, I got the vaccine, you know, conveying that it's safe, and I received the vaccine, and encouraging individuals to do that as well. Underlying the entire campaign will be the importance of continuing our mitigation efforts. So probably heard us use the phrase, this is one important tool in our toolbox. We can't entirely rely on the vaccine. We still need to keep up our masking, social distancing, et cetera, but realizing this is really a vital tool for us to move forward post-COVID-19. So with that, that's all that I have, and we'll open it up for questions for our group.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Questions from the council. Go to Counselor Erickson first.
Thank you. Brianne, if you want to say first, since you're close by. I know you mentioned partnering with some influencers and things of that nature, but talk to me about who will be partnered with in the community as far as other financial contributors. I don't want to say any names, but the state, to make sure that that messaging is spot-on and continues to carry over from place to place, to making sure that the multicultural facility has the same messaging for their people that they help in our community and each of the other nonprofits. So talk a little bit about that mission as far as making sure that all avenues are using the same language or any financial contributions as well.
Sure. So our health department team and I have really been working collaboratively with the healthcare systems. We have our bi-weekly COVID Unified Command meetings where we meet with the CMOs at both healthcare systems, and I've also had conversations with the marketing teams at both Avera and Sanford and invited them to look at our messaging when it's ready and support that and lift up that messaging. We also, as you pointed out, want to make sure that our messaging isn't distracting or going against what they're sharing. So I think that collaborative piece of making sure our messaging is very supportive of what everyone is saying will continue to be very important. I think the challenge is with this type of marketing effort, things move so quickly. That's the challenge. Before Christmas, I did have some good conversations with the two marketing teams, and we're staying in the loop with what the State Department of Health is doing as well, and Sandy usually fills me in on what they're doing, so we have updates on their website rollouts and their infographics. So it's a lot of just constantly juggling, and right now with this plan that I outlined, the agency outlined the overall tactics, and now we plan to move into the messaging piece. And I think just staying very fluid with that will be important. So what we're planning to do is have an overarching campaign name. So if you think about Mask Up SF, something like that that's overarching, but then we can really change our messaging and be a little more nimble with our messaging. Like I mapped out this, the availability of the vaccine will kind of change our messaging. So that's kind of our way of being nimble with that. You brought up a good point about the multicultural center and those sorts of entities. I hadn't considered that. I think that, you know, making sure that once we establish our messaging, that they're included and we can share it with them and allow them to also disperse the messaging and being more collaborative and thinking outside the box. You know, it's also grassroots, too.
Right.
I've thought about things like going to having someone present at the Chamber of Commerce and Rotary meetings and, you know, doing some of those educational opportunities where we can educate leaders in the community and they can share those messages. So it's, you know, I think it's both the ad buy and the spending piece, but also educating our community leaders and your neighbor and just, you know, getting that message out there through those other non-traditional, like more grassroots avenues.
Right. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And so one thing I would just encourage is, if you do have marketing materials that could be made available for the multicultural center, the chamber, just to create that consistency so the message is viewed over and over and over and done in a way that as a business owner, if I want to use that marketing material, I can quickly print it off and I can hang it in my business.
Right. Right. It's easy to do, like the Safer Sioux Falls pledge, like we created.
Yes.
The graphic, here it's ready to go. You can print it out.
Yes.
You can display it, and just make it easy for people.
Yes. And I know for me personally, you know, I have stuff up all over in my properties, educating folks, and so having it as easy as possible. I think that you'll see great success with your grassroots of encouraging people and partnering with places like the Chamber to say, hey, let's get this out to the entire mall. Can you put this up? Or whatever it is, just to continue to get that reach even broader as we have so many travelers into our state. And even the athletic associations, I would encourage you to reach out to because so many of our neighboring states are closed for sports that oftentimes South Dakota teams can't even get into basketball tournaments because there's so many people from Minnesota coming here. And so educating those sports teams of saying, hey, don't forget when you go home to make sure that you're making it a priority to go. to make sure that you're making it a priority to get your vaccine," or whatever it is that that is. We have a lot of travelers coming in for athletic opportunities because we're open. So thank you for that. I have one question for Jill if I can. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. So Jill, my question, kind of twofold. I heard a six-month rollout for the vaccine, saying essentially we should have everyone vaccinated by six months, which is exciting to hear. I don't know if that's...
I think, you know, a marketing campaign to be able to utilize those dollars and not overextend ourselves until we know we have other resources would be about a six-month campaign. So I wouldn't want you to confuse that with the timeframe it's going to take to roll it out. But within six months, we should be really well into the masses. And then we'll continue to be pushing an awareness. But right now, we think that campaign and the $100,000 that's being appropriated could last us about six months.
Got you. Thank you for the clarification. So my question is, with us having two massive healthcare systems in Sioux Falls, we are really a regional hospital system. We have people coming from all over, and we've oftentimes heard numbers of patients staying here. So when we talk about the vaccination, if someone from Iowa, North Dakota, Minnesota, wherever, from around the area, maybe they're here from Colorado and they got sick and they're in the hospital, can they get their vaccine here? Or do you actually have to have a South Dakota driver's license and be from South? Like, talk to me about that because I would also hate, not to be territorial, but I would hate for a higher-risk person that is deemed to get this vaccine and they wanted to so desperately and they couldn't because somebody from another state chose to take their seat in line or their place in line. Again...
Sure. And I'll ask Sandy to tap me on the shoulder if there's anything I'm missing here. But in conversations that the State Department of Health has had in their meetings with us, they've made it clear that if you are, since we are a border community with a couple of different states, several, that they said if you have someone who works in Sioux Falls, you know, someone, but they live maybe in, you know, Laverne, but they work in Sioux Falls, it's not going to preclude them from being able to get vaccinated in Sioux Falls. And so we do expect that we'll see some of that. You don't have to have a driver's license to be able to do so. I mean, we have city employees who live in other states and who've already been vaccinated, you know, that maybe live right across the border in Minnesota or Iowa. And so certainly some of them have already been vaccinated. And so we expect that might happen. As far as from farther distances, I think, you know, some of that will be a little bit... You know, we aren't dealing with those populations yet until we get to that Phase D. And even that will probably be somewhat limited when you look at who is all included in that phase. And so I think once we get to, you know, the Phase Two and completely through Phase One, I think that'll be well in hand.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that that is certainly something that, I guess, keeps an eye on it. My Colorado example probably is a little far-fetched, but really meaning more Minnesota and Iowa and Nebraska around is more of an obvious that they could come. Like, if all of the sudden we all go to the Premier Center and it's my turn or somebody's turn to get it, and all of a sudden there's an influx of people from Sioux City, I would have a problem with that because it was intended for South Dakotans. Again, not to be territorial, but just to make sure that there's a clear process in place for that. And of course, we want everyone to feel safe and secure and get vaccinated. And if we can help out our neighbors, great. But making sure it goes to those that it was intended to first and foremost, I think is important.
Sure. And I think there'll be some harkening back to H1N1 and the work that we did with rolling out that vaccine, you know, as well. Like, for example, when we get involved in Phase Two of more vaccine delivery, you know, we'll be utilizing those plans that we had in place at that time. But that's, you know, a lot of those are really communications coming from the State Department of Health and helping advise.
Thank you for that update. Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question would have to do with the education campaign, much along the lines of what was brought up by Counselor Erickson, too. As far as funds and contributors goes, in relation to like ad buys, I know that most media sources have funds set aside for public service campaigns, this type of thing. Has there been any talk so far as far as obviously some money will be spent here and there? Do most sources have a pretty good pool or fund or things that they can pitch towards the effort as well?
Yeah, that's something that I know the agency was taking into consideration. I mentioned earlier the PSAs that we did with the mayor. So several of the media outlets were running those as part of one of their... Basically, they ran them for free for us. So I know those are definitely opportunities that we will look into and consider in terms of getting more for our money, considering this is really a public service, a public health campaign.
Right. Because I mean, all in all, I mean, $100,000 sounds like a lot, but in ads, especially when it's spread out, that doesn't go a whole...
It actually doesn't. And when I had this initial conversation with the agency, I think in my mind, I was surprised just how quickly we run through, just how quickly it goes, even with digital billboards, just looking at, we spent close to $13,000, not entirely on the billboards, but it was, you know, several months of digital billboards, an infographic, a PSA, like it adds up very fast. So I think by leveraging what we can, having grassroots efforts, things that are low cost, like partnering and combining these together will allow us to have a more robust campaign. But I agree, it is challenging just working with those funds. But we'll do what we can with those dollars.
Sure. I would hope something like this would be like 100 grand can be leveraged to get 300 grand worth of paying for your buck type of thing, whatever that might be. But again, it's one of those where advertising-wise, when you're going in so many different directions, I know that can always be tough, too.
We definitely had those conversations already and certainly will be looking into that. And like I mentioned, several of the media outlets in town have, you know, have certain programs that they have dollars available or have certain dollars to spend as part of their public service programs, that sort of thing. So there are those opportunities to help us get more for our dollars.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that. My other question would be probably for Jill. It sounds like we're off to a great start as far as the vaccinations. Are there a lot of kinks in this system so far as far as distribution? Or has it been a pretty well-oiled machine thus far? Or there's just still a lot to work with as far as...
You know, this has been one area where I have been really impressed with the health systems. You know, they've been allocated funding to the health systems by the state to do this rollout in Phase One. And I am just so impressed with the work that they've done. I am equally impressed with how they've been collaborative. You know, we always often talk about how the health department is kind of like the United Nations for Sanford and Avera, and that, you know, when we come together from a public health approach, it's just amazing how well we all work together. And this is just another example. Our space in this has been very, very minimal with the Sioux Falls Health Department thus far, but we have been in that 1C group, vaccinating our, you know, folks within the city that are in that space. And then Sanford and Avera have been taking the lion's share out into the other counties that they've been assigned to, to, you know, complete those. So kinks, there's going to be kinks for sure. And I think when we see the second dosing start happening on top of then doing first dosing of new groups, I think that's when we're going to start seeing, and when we start really seeing big numbers. You know, I've been told the 1D is a very large number when they start really identifying who all is in that demographically. That could be, that'll be, you know, when we start seeing a stress to the system. But these early days have given everyone a chance to really practice with a known quantity, the healthcare providers, people in, you know, our nursing home residents and those that are within more of the public sector, if you will. So I think that's given everyone a chance to really get good at this, so.
So when they say 3% so far has been vaccinated, how far has that gotten us through like Stage A, the most important people yet? Are we close to getting through As? Or is that hard to tell?
Well, in our area, we're pretty almost, I mean, there's probably some nursing home residents yet to vaccinate, but as far as 1C, we're pretty well completed with 1C in this area. There'll be certainly folks that will continue to identify and then we'll get them into, you know, either Sanford or Avera's clinics at this time. But the vaccine that we had allocated, kind of sub-allocated, I should say, to us, we went through all that vaccine within the last week and vaccinated several hundred city employees.
Right. That's great news. Thanks for the presentation today. Appreciate it.
Great.
Vice Chair, Sal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jill, I have a question about testing facilities. Originally, you know, it was the major hospitals doing it. Now I see spit in the tube, mail it in, overnight testing, 20-minute testing, you know, Kurtz testing at the corner of Bailey and Bailey. So how are these testings regulated? And do they report to the state along with everything else?
Sandy, do you want to take this one?
So the testing is still being coordinated through the State Department of Health. And then the data, this is reportable illness. The data is reported to the State Departments of Health of the resident of the person receiving the test. So if I was visiting here from another state and decided to have a test and I went to one of the locations, so I should back up. So the testing that's being done through our healthcare systems still requires you to be either as a pre-op or be symptomatic. But we do have a number of organizations and opportunities, some of our local pharmacies. And there is a private entity in town that has provided people the opportunity to just go in and have a test for whatever purposes. They may have been exposed, they're nervous, they were going on a trip, whatever it may be. Those are regulated. They're using the same testing methods that are provided through the other systems. Their turnaround time can be a little bit different depending upon what they're using for reference. But their data does have to be reported to the State Department of Health of the residence of the person being tested.
Thank you.
You bet.
Counselor Brackey.
About the ad campaign, just a question. I was noticing that, you know, kind of the laundry list, media placement to include search engine marketing, digital billboards, social media, radio, and direct mail. And I don't see any TV ads on there, and I know probably why because it's the most expensive, at least it has been in the past. And then that is where you can often get some PSAs. But I'm wondering if there's been given any discussion to utilizing our own Channel 16 in this process. I've kind of felt all through this crisis that we've underutilized that mechanism. And we have a TV station of our own that runs all day long. And it would seem that we could utilize that inexpensively. Is there reasons...
What I outlined for you today is really just at a very broad level of what we're planning to do. But that was our conversation when I talked with Fresh Produce last week. It was along the lines, how can we, like you pointed out, utilize our city assets that we already have in place? You mentioned Channel 16. They had some creative ideas around mailers. Could we utilize our, like, our utility mailer that we send out? I don't know. I haven't looked into that yet. But just thinking creatively along the lines of what are we already sending? What resources do we already have available? So I think that's a great point that did come up in our discussion last week.
I would just certainly like to see us at this juncture utilize them. If they had a certain time of day where certain information could be, you know, received from them. And if they could channel, they could actually channel, you know, they could push people to other places. They could tell people to go, you know, register at a website or something like that, you know, too. I just think there's a lot, a multitude of ways that they could be utilized.
Yeah, exactly. And one idea that just comes to mind is having a Q&amp;A session like with Director Franken or, you know, we can really utilize that network. There's so many opportunities for this campaign. And I think using, yes, like you said, using the resources that we already have available, definitely important.
And then a question or two for Jill. Thank you. So Jill, tonight we have before us the, you know, the resolution for the $100,000. And then the mayor made a comment in his press release about $120,000. Did the $120,000 come forward and is that going to be spent as part of the six-month one? Or has it been spent already? I'm just wanting to know the status of that.
No, I think it was probably an answer that was talking more comprehensively about what we have done and what we're going to continue to do. So that would really talk about how we're utilizing, you know, about $125,000. We haven't used all of, or $120,000. We haven't used all of that $20,000 this year. And so that wouldn't necessarily, because of where it's appropriated into 2020, be available to us next year. But that's where, like I'm telling, you know, we've been saying that as we can find other funding resources, we'll continue to augment that. But the idea is the $20,000 was for the work we did in 2020 and then the $100,000 will be for 2021. And as you heard, we would want to try, we would want to work very hard to launch that by the end of this month, so.
The reason I'm asking is because that was to come from surplus funds. So, I mean, we could add that back into it if it wasn't programmed. We could reprogram it tonight, but...
I guess I'd want Director Pritchett to weigh in on that, you know, if there was any additional opportunities for, you know, this year, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Star.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Franken, a couple of the things. One of the things that I was listening yesterday during the press conference, and Dr. Wildy talked about patients who were still hospitalized but weren't still COVID-positive. And I was confused by that. I pretend to have a lot of medical knowledge, then I have none. So it's normally what I do. But I was confused by that because I think of hospitalizations with COVID that they're still COVID-positive while they're still hospitalized. And how, help me a little bit understand that.
Yeah, sure. You know, they have taken an approach to really identify within their patients who have come in being positive for COVID, what number of them, you know, are, in a sense, discharged with COVID as a diagnosis versus they've been there long enough that they have actually tested negative at some point. They still have, that was what they came in for, was a primary diagnosis and disease of COVID. But that doesn't mean that that's what they currently might have. And so, you know, you're probably talking about those that have had maybe an ICU stay and have been quite lengthy in their illness, but that would be what he's referring to.
Okay. So roughly, does that make them eligible for visitors then at that point when they no longer test? Because we hear a lot about, you know, when we talk about the mental health part of this, you know, it's also dealing with the loss of family and the loss of the ability, the time that it takes to spend time visiting a relative or a family member and all of those other things. So I guess I'm just curious, does that open up, and it's probably a system question more than...
Yeah, I think I would want to have them weigh in on that. But, you know, COVID has really changed a lot in terms of just in general how people could come and be, you know, visiting in the hospital. And while they've made some adjustments, you know, to be able to allow for some visitation for patients who don't have COVID, they still are very, you know, restrictive on that. But I want them to answer that question.
That makes sense. One of the, kind of going along with that, when we were talking about the mass vaccination, when we finally get to two and part of that, do we see that as part of employer-specific as well as, or people who are also working in close confines, call centers, manufacturing plants? I mean, a lot of what we do with the flu vaccines, really employers help us out as much with the distribution as they do anything.
You know, someday that might be, you know, what happens, similar to what you might see with influenza and how we really utilize the masses to be able to help do that. Right now, because of the handling intricacies and storage intricacies with the COVID vaccine, I don't see that happening in the foreseeable future in 2021. I see that being very, you have to register to be an entity that can, you know, receive vaccine and you have to go through training, very specific, quite a few hours actually of training, not only to be able to handle the vaccine, store the vaccine, but then also to administer the vaccine. And so right now, that's just, you know, there's a lot that can, you know, possibly go wrong if you don't do everything the way you need to. And so I think that's why they probably wouldn't be, that wouldn't be an option in the near term.
Okay. Counselor Erickson asked a really good question that I kind of want to build on or follow up on a little bit. So what kind of ID or information do you need to be vaccinated? The little bit of paperwork, again, I make my point of reference to the influenza vaccinations, but is there a requirement for an ID? Is there a...
Sure. I'm going to have Sandy tell, kind of walk you through, you know, what is, what happens in the vaccination clinic. So she's got that well in hand, so.
So for example, we received a small sub-allocation of vaccine. And we set our, our vaccination efforts up very much mirroring what both of the healthcare systems are doing. And it's really along that, we call them pods, points of dispensing process. It's really how you do mass vaccination. So for us, when the person comes in, the first thing they have to do is fill out their address on a, on their form, right? So we have their address. And for this vaccine, we are required, when we enter our data into the state's data immunization system, to make sure that there is an address for everyone. So that's kind of our screening on it. So I'm not asking people to say, you know, I need to see your driver's license. I'm not saying that, okay, if you're in Group C and you're an EMS provider, that I need to see you in uniform. I mean, there is a level of trust in, in this. But, but we do have to collect some information. That does help, again, assure us of where folks are coming from. And then as Director Franken had said earlier, if somebody lives in a neighboring state, but they work in our state, they are eligible for vaccination in our state. Vaccination, the vaccine is being allocated though based on state population. So if you can stay in your home state for your vaccination, it's very strongly encouraged. But we do realize there is crossing of the lines.
Well, I think somehow that it's that tracing that gets the second dose is really the most important part of this, isn't it? That, I mean, is there a way to, I mean, with just address, is that enough to follow up on to, to make sure people show up for that second dose?
So a little bit of that, again, depends upon what, what system you're working in. So for example, the healthcare systems, when you go and have your vaccination at their systems, they are setting up your appointment at, at that same time. Now, for the effort that we did, what we'll do is just reach out because they are our employees and bring them back in. And then the other part of the reminder piece is there, there is a CDC program called V-Safe. So when you receive your vaccine, you, you can scan a QR code which will connect you to the CDC. And then once a day for the first week, it sends you a little message, text message that says, hey, today's your daily reminder to check in and see how you're feeling. But it will also send you the reminder for your vaccine. And then we do provide everybody with a vaccination card that says which vaccine they got because we do need people to receive the same manufacturer as their initial dose and then the day that they received it. So we are going to ask people to bring those back with them, too.
Thank you.
You bet.
Counselor Brecky, did you have another follow-up?
That last series of questions, what I was interested, I was wondering, wondering if we were in a one-dose or two-dose situation.
So right now, the, the two vaccines that have received EUA, Moderna and Pfizer, are both two-dose vaccinations. Pfizer has a 21-day wait period between doses. Moderna has a 28-day. We do have a vaccine coming along from Astra, excuse me, not AstraZeneca, but from Johnson &amp; Johnson. We anticipate we may see their EUA mid-February. That would be a one-dose series. So a little bit of it depends upon the manufacturer. But the manufacturers we are currently vaccinating with are two-dose series.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments from the phone? Not hearing any. I, I was curious if there are any, this is a little bit different type of vaccine. My understanding, it's not like a weakened or a dead virus. It's something else. So are there certain, I don't know if the word is contraindications to taking it? For example, I, tell me maybe about pregnant women and children under 16.
So based on, on EUAs, Moderna is only able to be given to people 18 and over. Pfizer is only able to be given to people 16 and over. Pregnancy is not a contraindication, but we do ask people that are pregnant to consult with their physician. It has to be their personal decision. They were not part of the phased trial. So that would be why it would be their personal decision. So about the only other reasons for deferral would be as if you'd received monoclonal antibody within the last 90 days. Or if you've either had another vaccination in the past 14 days or anticipate receiving one within the next 14 days. Because you, you have to have a bit of a window there. You also, if you've tested positive for COVID, need to be out of isolation. Or if you're a close contact, out of quarantine. Other than that, it's, there are other contraindications. Other than, we have not seen any significant issues with allergies. If you were allergic to any of the components of the vaccine, that would of course be a contraindication.
Sure. And with, with multiple vaccines, hopefully maybe one might not work, but the other does would be okay for you. Well, that's, that's great to hear. And that includes people who are, who are immunocompromised. They're, and in fact, they're encouraged or they're near the front of the line. If, if, if somebody doesn't get their second dose in a timely period, what, what happens? Can you come back two months later or do you have to start over? What, how does that work?
So the information that we've been given on our guidance with the EUA at this point is there's a four-day window prior. So if you can't be there on day 28 or day 21, we can go four days early. If you miss day 28, people are encouraged to get their vaccination as soon as possible afterwards. And we do not have to restart the series.
Okay. And how has been, you, you, you know, there's been some national discussion. How has been the uptake in terms of people who've been eligible taking it versus saying, I, I'm not, I'd rather not at this point for whatever reason?
I can tell you locally that our healthcare systems did poll their, their employees to see what their uptake might be. And at the time of polling, they were seeing about a 70% interest with, with a portion of the people that were not interested stating their reason for not being interested because they were pregnant at the time. And so what we saw within our department, within the health department, anecdotally, was a little over 60% uptake in talking to the healthcare systems. We were told that that should be something we were very pleased with. So, you know, at least in these first groups that we're dealing with, we're, we're seeing people being fairly receptive to receiving the vaccine.
Okay. And finally, public confidence is going to be a huge part of this for people to be confident to take the vaccine because of what may be perceived as its accelerated development. So what kind of message are, do you think that we need to be sending to the community and people about, about safety?
Well, I, I, first of all, just sheerly looking at the numbers of people that have received the vaccine without having any adverse effects is one thing we would want to talk about. But the other thing is, we have to continue to remember that we really truly didn't have an ex, that each of these vaccines did go through phase one, phase two, and phase three. And while it feels like it was accelerated, what typically happens is a drug manufacturer does phase one, and then they do phase two, and then they do phase three because of the financial commitments to it. With this vaccine, vaccination process, phases one, two, and three really overlapped each other so that the work could be done in a shorter period of time. But everything still went through their phases of approval.
Okay. So, I mean, the amount of people tested in the process, I mean, there were no shortcuts. It's just, normally they would have it much more phased because they're taking huge financial risks in doing it. Whereas in this case, they had maybe the backing of the federal government.
They had that backing through the Operation Warp Speed, which was the, the federal program, which allowed them to overlap their phases and be able to make that progress faster.
And finally, if, if there's going to be maybe ill effects from a vaccine, would it typically, would we be seeing it earlier or would we see it long ways down the line?
Well, what we're seeing, really, and there's some great information out on the CDC's website, is, is that people, when we're looking at, you know, whether you want to call them side effects or really signs that you're having an immune response, which is what we want people to have after vaccination, is, is some of that achiness, a little bit of a headache, some injection site redness and, and soreness. So I, I mean, what we're seeing right now as we initially roll this out is very much been consistent with what we're seeing for other vaccinations.
Okay. Very successful so far. Great. Okay. Thank you. Good report. Thank you for coming. Next, we're going to move to B, item 4B. Update, South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance policy, ethics rider by Counselors Pat Starr and Janet Brecky. Maybe I should just open the floor to either one of you to just take over.
Absolutely. If, if that's okay, Mr. Chair. I, I wouldn't mind starting. One of the things that we received after we stopped, we had our last meeting in December and got ready for the holidays, was an email that we all received from Director O'Toole that talked about the new 2021 policy or liability coverage for 2021. Couple of good things that were included in the email, talking about updating us and those kind of things in a, in a short amount of time. But a couple that also concerned me, and the, the first was the, really the, the special endorsement for a new defense coverage. Basically taking the mayor and the council and covering us for, all municipalities have an option to buy this coverage. But it would cover us in the case that there was an ethics board complaint filed. And then an attorney would be assigned from the pool, the, the risk pool, and given to the, the council member or the mayor or that was accused. And so, again, one of the things that initially popped out to me were, there were a number of things that it was a coverage of up to $10,000 and an aggregate of $20,000 over the year for a cost of $7,500. Which to make this decision originally, the, like I said, the first thing that popped out to me is that this is a policy discussion that this group should be having rather than being told about it after it was already implemented or in the process of being implemented. This type of agreement, similar to when we added a rider for cybersecurity, we added that to the consent agenda for this council's approval. It was one of those items that we did. This is very similar. We're spending additional money. The contract is changing and the agreement that we have. So I think that's a, a discussion that it should have been included earlier in the month. What I think happens is that with this contract, it, it's very difficult to get that in place. I've been following this process all the way back to, you know, last time when we were talking about who had the ability to sign this agreement. And we worked our way through that part of the process. What it didn't do was cover when we have these type of changes. So the Assurance Alliance Board meets in early December. They put the, the agreement and the policy and the pricing together and send it to us as a city. And normally, over the course of at least the last 10 years that I've looked at, we get that late in December, which is well past our third meeting as part of that. So there isn't a time for us to actually consider it and take a look at it. It's one of those things we have to sign and pay and, and move forward. Do we make changes in the new year and potentially? So one of two things I feel that needs to happen, we either need to get to a point where the council only approves contracts except this one because it doesn't meet the timeframe that we need to turn this around. And that's sure a slippery slope that I'm not sure that I want to go down. But at some point, the council has to approve contracts. That's what our ordinances say. Goes back to, and it, and again, with this contract, it makes it a little iffy because we've moved risk management from department to department, you know? At one point, it was part of human resources. Then it moved to the fire department. And we all kind of know some of the history of that, why it moved to the, the fire department. Then it moved back to the city attorney's office. And now currently, in the last two years, it's moved back to human resources. So some of the things in the reporting requirements have been missed. I don't believe intentionally. I think it's oversight over time and lack of following through in the process that I think little safeguards go away each time over the years. And it eventually, you know, for quite a long time, it didn't come to the council at all. So I think we've got a, an issue that we need to discuss as a, a council of how do we want to handle this? We've got to be able to give the department some flexibility to get this in place in the, the next years there. But we also have our fiduciary responsibility as a council to be included in that process to approve contracts. The second thing that really stood out in this email for me is that who are we covering as part of this additional defense? We're covering, from what I can tell from the email, we're covering the mayor and we're covering the council. We're leaving our employees. Why aren't they covered as part of this same thing? I'm not sure that they're covered as part of the, the plan, but maybe we need to take a look at, you know, we're getting $20,000 worth of coverage aggregate for $7,500. Maybe we self-insure for the difference for our employees. Or at least be able to have that discussion because I think their work for the city is just as vital as what we do as elected officials. The other is, I think there's a, an overall policy discussion, thirdly, that we need to talk about if this is actually something that we want to do. When we go ahead and this goes into place, we are now covering both sides of the lawsuit. We're covering for someone, I'm not sure that the, the taxpayers of the city of Sioux Falls should cover someone who has committed an ethics violation. But how do you get to the point? We want to cover our part of it as part of our job and what we do and us doing our job. But if we've committed a violation and the ethics committee has said that we've violated the, the ethics code, at what point do we stop covering that person? It, I was trying to come up with some examples of when and where, that would be a good thing. But where there, you're clearly guilty, it seems odd that the city would, would cover you. We've seen that just in the recent past with the, a former police chief. We, or not police chief, I'm sorry, fire chief, where we didn't cover their expenses for their attorneys to fight what we accused them of. I don't think that if someone has embezzled money from the city, that the city should pay for their attorney fees. And again, where does that process start? And, and one other really kind of other place that I want to take a look at is why this really makes it expensive and difficult for a citizen to come forward and bring an ethics complaint? Because now they're going up against trained lawyers. And if you look at the email, it specifically says they're the best in the state. And it takes the little bit of informality out of the process from the ethics board and turns it into a judicial process that is now going to require lawyers on both sides. It's going to require additional legal time. And it said that it would be expert lawyers. There aren't a lot of lawyers in South Dakota that, that's specialized in this type of practice. So the number of conflicts and the time that it gets, I don't think the intent of the ethics board was ever to be lawyer battling lawyer, that it still allows us to go forward and ask for informational type of requests and things. So I think there's a number of things here that we need to take a, take a look at. So with that, I'd probably defer to Counselor Brecky to, to do that and then take questions as we move forward.
I don't have much to add. That, I think summarizes the concerns that I had. I think the, the main concerns I had really were the substance of it and exactly understanding what, you know, what kind of coverage we are purchasing. And so my concerns really parrot what Councilmember Pat Starr just said. And that is, you know, we're covering both sides of the lawsuit. We're providing coverage for the ethics board because we're paying for their attorney. And then we're paying to defend, for the defense of anyone who comes before the ethics board and us. So we're defending, we're paying for us that are the remaining lawyers and us that are accused of something and the board that's hearing it. And that's just, you know, from a lawyer's standpoint, there's something that just doesn't pass my gut test on that there's something wrong about that kind of a lawsuit. I think that how it works is there's thresholds, you know, and, and depending on the thresholds, there's a point where the representation needs to stop. And the city should not be paying for, you know, for, for the defense of individuals because they truly are acting as individuals and not in their capacity on behalf of the city, depending on what they're doing. And again, just talking on hypotheticals, and the city's getting bigger. And this may not be happening today, but down the road, it definitely could happen. You know, there could be bribery. There could be kickbacks. There could be those kinds of things that start out as ethical violations under the Conflicts of Interest ordinance. But the, once those thresholds are meant, are met, you know, that there's a finding that there was probable cause that these things happened, then that's a springboard into like a legal action or a, a criminal action. You know, a tort action or a criminal action, you know? And there's different thresholds on the civil side. It's, you know, a showing of whether, whether it meets sufficiency on the, the, the civil side, you know, is a matter of whether or not it can pass summary judgment. And on the criminal side, it's whether it can pass probable cause. But in any event, once it's past those thresholds, you know, once it's found that like it's not frivolous and, or there is sufficient, you know, evidence to determine that, that there is a question of whether something happened or there is probable cause, the city shouldn't be defending those actions. And to have something set up that automatically kicks into play that we are is just, you know, I, I think that, you know, you know, that raises some real serious concerns for me. I mean, why would we want to do that? And then I also have the concern about, you know, what it does to that ethics process. I think it, it kind of undermines the ethics board and what there's, what we're putting them there to do and the job that they're to do. And it certainly discourages any citizen or, you know, employees. And it certainly discourages any citizen or, you know, employees can come forward. And again, let's just assume hypothetically that there's a situation where there's something bad going on in city government and that whistleblower situation where some employee wants to come forward. And what the likelihood of that happening in a situation where they're coming up against, again, the best lawyers, you know, in the state, is just going to discourage that activity. And the Ethics Board, again, its job is to set a high standard of conduct for city employees. It's to, you know, arrive at a high, you know, have a culture of ethics within the city and encourage, you know, that to happen. This is, to me, you know, very undermining to that kind of a positive process. It makes it a very adversarial process, a very litigious process, and one that is, you know, really going to discourage, you know, any citizen or employee or even council member, you know, from coming forward. So, you know, I just, I have more questions than answers on it and, you know, some genuine concerns that, you know, about doing it. And then I would also, yeah, share the concern that it does feel a little bit like Congress where we're going to take care of ourselves, but we're not going to cover our directors or we're not going to cover the average employee in this situation. That doesn't feel, you know, like the right thing to do either. So that's all I have to add. And then, you know, if we take any questions and see if anyone else, I guess, shares my concerns.
Thank you. Let's start with Counselor Sale.
Thank you. Just a few, give me my observation on this. First off, the fire chief was a criminal, and so he didn't fall underneath this. And it's not the first fire chief, by the way, to do that. So, and I come at this from a little bit more industry understanding. Directors and officers insurance that is out there in the marketplace, it regularly would cover expenses like this if you're on the board of Pat Starr Foundation and something would come up. I mean, your directors and officers insurance covers part of this. Along with that is we as city, part-time city councilors who don't rely on this job for our, to pay our rent, it sometimes seems that this job of being a city councillor provides a financial burden on people. And as we go into this climate, political climate going in the future, more people have told me in the past that they just don't want to take a chance being in, serving on city public because of all the things that have they seen gone down in the last few years, not just in Sioux Falls, but certainly across the country. So a level of protection that we can provide for some ethics accusation, I feel is proper at this time. I do agree with you, Counselor Starr, that I would like to see this renewal come to us 30 days prior to the renewal date so we could discuss it. It's a large expenditure. And I would encourage those people that might be in Human Resources to see if we could make that happen going forward in the future. But as far as this one goes, I do support it. I do, I will say that I believe $7,500 for $20,000 coverage is excessive. But of course, I am not an underwriter, and I argue with underwriters on cost of insurance all day for my clients. But I, it's what we have in front of us at this point. And sometimes you have to take what you can get. So there, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Others? Counselor Erickson?
I just want to comment on a couple of things that were brought up. We're not changing the contract to my, I believe that's right. I see some head nodding. Thank you, Mr. O'Toole. That the contract hasn't changed, that was said many times. I don't believe that the city council makes the administrative decision to change insurance within the city employees as well. I see head nodding. So that's another decision that is made administratively and that this was also made administratively. The Ethics Board acts as the prosecutor and they're afforded an attorney. So they get an attorney, and I think they should. Shouldn't the defendant also have an attorney? Shouldn't the defendant also, shouldn't I have representation? Shouldn't you have representation? Not everyone here is an attorney. I understand, Counselor Breckie, you can represent yourself. Counselor Starr cannot. And so, and I cannot if I want representation. And so it feels as if only the rich and wealthy apply to serve for a city council because I can afford an attorney and you are an attorney. I just don't find that to be encouraging in our community to make sure that we have a diverse council that looks like our community. We don't want eight attorneys sitting here. Sorry to the two attorneys in the room, no offense. But we don't want eight attorneys sitting here on the city council. We just don't want that. We need every walks of life. One thing we do miss on this council is color. You know, we used to have color represented on this council, and that's important. And I hope that that can change in the future. And so with that, I share that you should receive representation, the Ethics Board. They get representation. And so can a working person afford to run for city council if there's a looming ethics overview at all times? I mean, it's a big deal. I kind of piggyback off of what you say as well, that oftentimes that those, the ethics is viewed and sometimes used as a political warfare, I'll use a term from a previous councillor, that it's just not fair to have that representation if needed. Now, it's my understanding that if I want my own attorney, I can pay for it myself. If I don't want to use the pool, I don't have to. It's my choice and it's an option for those that can't. Maybe, Counselor Breckie, you can represent yourself. Maybe you can, and that's great. But maybe I can't. And so I should be, just like a criminal defendant is afforded an attorney, just like the Ethics Board acts as the prosecutor and is afforded an attorney. It wouldn't be but for me sitting in this chair. And so I, based on the canons, I've made myself very well-versed in those canons to ensure that I am acting as ethical in my role, and we all do. And so having those canons there for us to guide our process does not mean that none of us will be targets. Every single one of us has had a threat of an ethics charge. I can name one for every single one of you and myself. And so why not have that ability to have representation? Because that wouldn't happen unless I was sitting in this seat. Wouldn't happen unless you were in that seat. And so this small change, while I do kind of feel $7,500 bucks is kind of hefty, I'm not in the insurance business, I think that this is a good start and that we can see if there's other options in the future. I appreciate the conversation and the email that was brought forward and a very transparent manner of you bringing that forward and feel like this is the right step for every single person on this council and for those that may come after me in the future. The last thing we want is for this to just be a seat of those that are wealthy and that can afford to have their own representation. That would really, I think, be difficult and challenging. And I believe too that if employees are having a violation against them, it does go through HR and they do have, based on what Kurt Sale said, there is additional coverage that they would be afforded. It didn't make sense to put it on here, and this was just a simple rider. I say simple, but I understand it's complicated to ensure that there is that available for us going forward. And so I will support this in the name of every single city councillor sitting here that will come forth again.
Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would probably say I agree with most of what's been said already. So I'll just say in summary, as far as where I come from, I do support the policy. I think it's needed and necessary. I think after what we've watched, especially within the last year, I believe there are a number of citizens who will take that example and use it to think twice before they think of running for office unless some changes are made in this direction. As far as running for office and maybe having to worry about their financial risk, that's something we don't want for anybody in the future. As far as the question of coverage versus city employees versus councillor or mayor, to me, I think it's a cost versus risk questions. As being a public servant in the public eye, the positions are much more at risk for the type of litigious actions that we've seen recently. So I will support this. Again, I think it's something that's good policy for those in the future and for those of us here today. So thank you.
Any, Counselor Sale?
Yes, just one quick follow-up. Counselor Erickson said, I do totally agree. It's an administrative function to negotiate this. And it's their job. And they did a nice job because I kind of followed along on how they approached it. My point on this, it is a big enough expenditure, so it'd be nice to have council ability to input if something went wrong. If we could get it so we have some meetings from the time we get notification to the time of implementation. If we could get it at this notification, the first of December, in case I had a huge heart, you know, I had heartburn with it so we could address it. I would request that in the future, we get a 30-day notice on it. But I agree with you, it is administrative function to do it.
Is there any questions or comments from the phone?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Kylie?
Thank you very much. Well, I know that I and several other councillors were concerned about the costs associated with defending oneself against ethics complaints and potential other claims. And so we requested that the administration look into options. The city attorney took up a review of the ethics ordinance, and in his interpretation, it was determined that a city councillor is entitled to representation at the city's cost. It's just that the city councillor does not have the option of selecting their own attorney. You would be assigned, the city would assign an attorney. If you wish to have your own attorney, then you would have to pay the cost at that time. That was really kind of a surprise to some of us who've served a long time on the council because we've seen many, a number of other previous councillors have to pay for their own attorney. So most of us were of the impression that that cost was of our own. And so this isn't really a change in anything. The representation has always been provided, but rather it's an attempt to provide the coverage and provide the individual with representation at a reduced cost. And the South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance allows and provides rates that are much lower than what the city could obtain privately. So basically, it's an attempt to provide representation for councillors as they need it at a reduced rate. And while the $7,500 for this rider does appear to be high, it still represents less than 1% of the total cost of over $800,000 annual of premium. So I think that maybe explains a little bit how this got started, you know, our concern about the cost of representing ourselves. And several councillors have already mentioned that that in itself could dissuade individuals from running for city council. So I think it's good that all of us now know that we are entitled to representation if we so elect to have that. I don't believe it undermines in any way the Ethics Board. I think what it does, as Counselor Erickson pointed out, they have their own attorney and it provides representation for the accused. I do agree with what was stated that there should be a point where if guilt has been determined, then it is, it does become the responsibility of that particular individual, as was, I think, Counselor Starr cited a case in the city's past history. So I think that, hopefully that gives a little bit more information. But I'd like to invite Bill O'Toole to come forward and maybe address anything else that he feels should be addressed that has not been.
Welcome, Director.
Counselor Bill O'Toole, Human Resources. Maybe just a couple of quick things with respect to the discussion points. I mean, first of all, and first and foremost, the decision to do this is yours. Obviously, we just facilitated the proposal and pursued the coverage. But to understand the coverage itself and the premium cost that goes with it, and somebody hit the nail on the head when you started talking about the value that you see from it, it really comes in the savings, if you will, in terms of the cost for the legal defense. The pool obviously gets a great rate when it negotiates with outside attorneys to sign up for those services. So while you see, I think, a modest coverage level at $10,000 per occurrence and a $20,000 aggregate, you've got to ask yourself, what does that buy you for the premium that you're getting? And the reality is, you're getting a fair number of hours of legal defense for those dollars. So it's better than you might think on its face. And procedurally, in terms of the contracts, I would just clarify as well that it's the IGC itself, the Intergovernmental Contract with the pool, the agreement between the city and the SDPAA for those services that the council acts upon and that was approved last, I believe it was July 17th. And also at that same meeting with respect to the IGC, pursuant to the terms of the IGC, the member organization also has to specify a liaison and alternates to help administer. And we did that. We designated HR Director and the Risk Manager as alternate and the Safety and Risk Coordinator as an alternate for purposes of transacting the business. And I won't get into all the details. But the rider, as it was referred to, is simply an endorsement to the existing general liability coverage that is provided under that policy. So I just want to clarify a little bit for that. And I don't know if that helps or not, or if that generates any additional questions, but I did at least want to address that the coverage for the premiums is really, it's not that bad in terms of what you get when you understand the limits and the amount of time that you would get for those. So again, how that would work is $10,000 per occurrence. You break that down, you can get, again, a fair number of hours for those, for that $10,000. And if there was ever a need to modify that, you could look at those. But again, somebody else hit it as well. You try to ensure for the risk that's there. And the reason we didn't go the route of employees, number one, that wasn't the ask. And number two, from an employee standpoint, I think any issue that would be raised, we could address those issues and could be separate apart from the ethics process. So if there was a concern, that could come to HR. We could deal with that through a performance process. So this was targeted to try to deal with where you thought the risk was. So I'm going to stop there and see if there's any other questions.
Thank you. We are running up on the clock, but we have a little more time. And Counselor Breckie?
Just a couple of questions. I'm kind of surprised at the city attorney's interpretation, that, you know, as the ordinance sits, that we were entitled to council coverage or to coverage as council members. Because it seems to me that the ordinance, the way it was originally set up is if there was going to be coverage, the window for coverage would probably take place at that initial step of determining whether or not it was frivolous. And after it was frivolous, though, it's clear in the complaint process that there's a divergence then between the best interests of the city and the interests of the individual. And it actually, you know, goes so far as to say in there that then it's at that point then in the process after the complaint's filed and that you're going to a hearing before the council, that then it's the individual's responsibility to provide legal counsel for themselves if they choose and to pay for it themselves. And that's specifically in the ordinance. So I guess maybe it's unfair to ask you that, but was he aware of that when he made his interpretation? Do you know? Because I mean, I can read it.
I don't have, I'm not able to respond to that, councillor.
Yeah, it just says, "A city council member against whom a complaint has been filed may elect to be represented by outside legal counsel of his or own choosing at their own expense." And that's, you know, that was because, again, you've got all the same entity here, where all the city of Sioux Falls... where all the city of Sioux Falls, the Ethics Board is the city of Sioux Falls's board. It's an arm of the board, you know, and again, it's acting in that prosecutorial function. Once they made that, that initial, you know, threshold determination, then there's a need, if you will, for the city to separate itself off from that individual. Is there a possibility of providing coverage after the fact? If later, you know, at a hearing of the full council, that's determined that there was not a violation, then could the, the expenses be reimbursed in lieu of, you know, providing coverage, you know, again, to defend the city against the city? I mean, we're, you know, the council coverage is covering an individual council member in a hearing where the remaining council members are sitting in a judiciary capacity. It's very strange to have that, the count, the city, city paying for all sides of the lawsuit. And then the way this coverage runs, it runs all up and through the appeal process.
Actually, the, the coverage is limited just in front of the Ethics Board and/or the governing body itself and it would end at that point. So, if there was an appeal post-city council action, that's where it ends.
Is, is there the ability to do it in, you know, after the fact? You know, after the finding that they're, you know, okay, because you've, because you've got the Ethics Board making a finding that it's not frivolous, then it goes forward, you know?
Yeah, and I, and I don't know the answer to that, if, if you could then request coverage with those parameters.
Because it seems like that would be, if there was, if it was possible to do it in retrospect, you could submit it afterwards for reimbursement because, you know, you found out that it was not.
Well, and, and that's all, that, that, it's always an interesting discussion as well, and the only thing I can somewhat liken it to would be on the administrative side with like an EEOC complaint, for example. So, if the city were charged with an EEOC complaint, you don't discern or differentiate between access and ability to seek coverage for purposes of that defense based on guilt or innocence. Not that that's what they find, but if you were found to have violated, there's not a, a parameter that says you'd have, doesn't pay that back. And that's only kind of a rough equivalent and it probably isn't the same equivalency.
I'm just wondering how we can actually...
And I guess the capability side might come in other forms, if you will, but, and whether or not you can write something in to deal with that, that's not for me to, I, I don't know if that's possible.
I'm just wondering how we can ignore that phrase in the, you know, in the ordinance that makes it clearly the responsibility of the, the council member. I mean, I'd rather have the insurance on the other side of it after there's a determination that, you know, the person was not, not, wasn't in violation of anything. And then I, and again, you, I've taken it as far as, you know, you can, I understand. I'm kind of putting you on the spot there and that's not really more questions for the city attorney. And then I would just respond to, you know, the comments about myself being attorney. I, I'm not, I'm really trying to, I guess, look out as much as anything for the Ethics Board and the integrity of the Ethics Board and its, its, its charge to create a culture of ethics in the city. And, and, you know, I don't, certainly, I would be as much concerned as anyone about being sued. And, you know, we were told in law school, a, a lawyer who represents himself as, as a, is a, has a fool for a client. And I, I would never, you know, represent myself if there was insurance available to me. I mean, I would probably utilize it just as much as anybody else and certainly, you know, understand what my fellow council members are saying about the risks that, you know, the additional risks that we have being in a public office and I don't want that to be a deterrent to people running. So, I, I would just say, I, you know, I would, you know, share the concern as, as everybody else, but I also am concerned about, you know, there being a point when the two interests do diverge and then, you know, using the, the criminal example, I think, was a good one because, again, oftentimes what is unethical is also criminal or illegal. And the ethical complaint is, is the snowball that starts that rolling. And, and, and I think we just have to be careful that we don't discourage those kinds of activities being revealed because, and, and again, often that times the ethics complaint is where that kind of activity can be unveiled and then it leads to something else. It becomes the springboard for, you know, either criminal proceedings or tort proceedings. And so, I don't know, I'm just, I'm not satisfied with the action, the, all of the answers. I, I'm not sure that we're going in the right direction. It is this simple. I think it's more complicated, but I do appreciate the open discussion. That's really what I was wanting to do today and I appreciate you coming and answering your questions as well.
We, we have at least, at most, five minutes, so I'm going to go to Counselor Erickson very quickly.
Okay, I'm going to make a statement. Stacy, can you come up while I'm making this? The statement was just said, being sued. When you're in front of the Ethics Board, you're not being sued. You have an ethics violation or an ethics accusation being made against you, but you're not being sued, so to speak. And so, I just want to make sure that the board's, Ethics Board's right and goal is not to sue someone. That's really important. Counselor Brecky made several comments about the way the ordinance is written since you're a legal counsel. I would like you to weigh in on that. No offense, Bill. He's our legal attorney. And I don't know if maybe Counselor Brecky didn't see you sitting off to the side, but I think it's important for you to weigh in on what was mentioned in those and what your interpretation is and was and why you feel this is the appropriate change.
Sure, thank you. Stacy Koestra, City Attorney. The discussion there was talking about 35.058, City Ordinance, 35.058, paragraph F2. And what, and what we were talking about at the time, what Counselor Kylie was referencing is, the language said, "A city council member against whom a complaint has been filed may elect to be represented by outside legal counsel of his or her own choosing and at their own expense." The discussion at the time was contextual regarding the, not unlike when somebody's entitled to an attorney in a criminal proceeding where they can choose their own counsel or one may be appointed. So, again, there was a context to that. At, at the time, our language here is not clear, somebody's entitled to representation, but that was the conversation that we had then. So, I understand your concerns, but there was a greater context to the discussion. So, does that answer your question?
Let's, let's finish with Counselor Starr.
Thank you. Attorney Koestra, I guess that's, I, maybe, I played junior medical earlier today. I'll play junior lawyer this af, you know, later as we go. I read that paragraph as saying is that the representation is up to the individual. So, what you're saying is that that's not what that means.
What I'm saying is that there's an argument, as with lots of things in the laws, you're aware, there's an argument both ways. It's not one where the language is clear. If anybody would want to take that interpretation, I'd want the language to be clear as it is in a criminal proceeding. Frankly, I think for purposes of this discussion, I'm not sure that it applies in this current analysis regarding administrative and policy, but that was a conversation we had at the time. So, I, I get what you're saying.
My other is, as we wrap this up, is that it, it was said that this is our choice as a body to make. And when, my question then is, not for you, Attorney Koestra, when did we make this choice? It sounds like some members made the choice, but it sure didn't come before us for an official action by any means. And if it was some of the councillors that brought this forward and it got included and we just moved forward, that's where my overall concern is. So, that's probably the time we have for today.
Thank you. I, I'll just finish up with a couple of notes before we close. I would just say, from my perspective, just for things for people to think about, you should think about future councillors, particularly and future mayors. There's no barrier to entry to file a complaint. The Ethics Board does not determine the guilt of, of anyone. They, they determine probable cause. You have to think about the fact of, for example, just for my case, I had about $17,000 in expenses, a couple of thousand of which I paid personally, the rest I've, I fundraised, but that's not a guarantee. And you have to ask yourself if you would tell anybody in good conscience to run for a part-time job that makes $19,000 a year if they may have a $17,000 legal bill. So, it's just something that we need to think about going forward and everybody has representation or they should have representation. So, good discussion. Okay, let's go to public comment.
May I make one very brief statement?
Yes, Counselor Kylie.
I'd just like to comment that F2 states that the council member against whom a complaint has been filed may elect to be represented by outside legal counsel of his or her own choosing at their own expense. It does not state they are not entitled to city legal representation. It does not state that. And I think that's where the clarification needs to be made. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to close it. We can discuss legal representation or the legal interpretation all day long. Public comment, up to five minutes. Seeing on this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1793.15][1793.15][applause]